Welcome. Today is October 21st, 2025. It is 5:30 PM and we are in the Bosch Freilich Meeting Room at Mandan City Hall. Mr. Newbauer, could you please take the roll?
Commissioners Heinzchen.
Here.
Braun.
Here.
Roar.
Here.
Schoburg.
Here.
Mayor Freilich.
Here. Now, we will all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll start off the meeting with announcements. Morton Mandan Public Library, North Dakota Tourism Grant Award. Barb?
That is me. So, last Tuesday morning at 6:30, checked my email and it says, "Award," or "Congratulations." Open it up and here we have been accepted for a $500,000 North Dakota Destination Tourism Grant through the North Dakota Commerce Department. And so what the purpose is, is upstairs, and I think many of you have talked to or heard me talk about this Makerspace where people can go up, design things, do podcasting, just there'd be a whole conglomeration of things. But our focus for this is that we would actually also turn some of the components into a tourist spot. So, we would set up tours. An example that I have is Enchanted Highway. So, we work with a company, we get a bus, people go on a tour through the Enchanted Highway, meet and talk with Gary Graff, and then come back to the Makerspace and they would create then their own souvenir for their day's adventure, or their own podcasting about it, their own video. So, there that we would have different experiences such as that, where people would be coming and they would start their day up at the Makerspace and then they would end their day at the Makerspace. This is to be done by June of 2027. And right now, we haven't even gotten any formal paperwork to sign or anything like that. It was just the award letter. Questions?
Questions for Barb?
You know, Barb, have there been, for the upstairs, have there been plans in place already that are existing presently as to the layout of formatting of word, or does that have to be done yet?
That all has to be done. And honestly, that is what I am as excited about. I mean, generally, the whole award. But we can then hire somebody who can come in, architect, and they can all help us design so that space can be used for multiple purposes as well as different Makerspace areas.
Because I was up there, it's been quite a while back and they were talking about this, what they'd like to do, and I thought maybe some plans were in place already, but maybe-
Just in my head.
Okay. Hopefully, they'll move out from there and into some concrete stuff.
It has to. Yep. It definitely has to.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Mayor and Barb, I'd like to thank you and your crew for doing all the work you have been doing, peripherally involved in that, because that's my portfolio, I guess. But you've been trying in earnest to acquire other grants for basically the same arena. And the thing that I like and personally find refreshing is not the word, but you're stepping up and working also with Mandan School System, Mandan School District, and Mandan Parks, two different projects, one of which is still in the works. So, give your crew pat on the back for us and appreciate all the work you're doing.
I will definitely do that. Also with this grant, I worked a lot with Matt, generating some ideas, like how we can expand that to make sure we're encompassing all of Morton County, as well as the different features that we have between Bismarck and Mandan that people would want to take active interest in. And part of it, too, comes from my growing up as a kid, going on tours in Boston and all of that. We'd sign up, our family, to go on this big bus tour, and we don't have anything like that in our area. And I just think that it brought really good memories for me, so I'm hoping that for others coming through, they will do the same. Plus, we get them to stay here a little bit longer as well.
Great job, Barb.
Can I make another announcement?
What's that?
We just learned today that, and actually Craig knows about this, in July, we had gotten a letter stating that as in our library world, there are standards that we have to meet. There are three of them, developing, excelling, and then future focused. And we learned in July that we had moved to the top rate, future focused. And we got a plaque today officially, so we were officially awarded and can say that. And we were one of four out of 84 libraries who received this honor. As far as I know, it's Bismarck, Grand Forks, Dickinson, and us. So, that's pretty good, too.
Congratulations to you and your staff. Thank you. My only question, Barb, is the Great Wall of China gonna stay?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Onto construction updates with Jerk.
Mayor and Commissioners, good evening. Have a few construction updates for you. They're getting slower and slower as the construction season kind of winds down, but Memorial Highway is still very, very active. Recent work include includes the following. There's five underground crews active on the project. Three of those are working on the 60-inch storm sewer between 40th Avenue and 32nd Avenue. On the south side of the road, the water services are complete and water crews will move to install water main in between 46th and 43rd on the north side of the road. And sanitary sewer is also complete on the south side of the road. So, Kissed Lift Station at 40th is fully in service and the paving on the south side of the road is at or through the 40th Avenue intersection right now. There's going to be a large, large pour next week. That would include 40th Avenue itself, and that's gonna be a big part of what's going on next week. Once again, just gonna reiterate some of this winter shutdown stuff. Currently targeting a November 23rd winter shutdown. The temporary wavy asphalt surface will not be, will not remain over the winter. Any sort of temporary solution over the winter would be flat and plowable. We have also received a few comments and concerns over the accelerated construction schedule and how that affects quality. And I reached out to both the NDDOT and our consultants on the project. And the NDDOT has five inspectors and two project engineers on the project. And then HDR, AE2S typically has three or more inspectors active on the project during construction activity. And then they reiterated that all pay items are inspected during installation to ensure quality and to make sure that they are being installed per the plans and specifications that REED is contractually obligated to follow. So, just want to assure everybody that, you know, with the accelerated construction activity, there is a matched oversight effort as well. Any questions on Memorial Highway?
Jerk, we had talked earlier. There's a process that actually goes on, if I remember right, when the concrete's actually coming out of the cement truck. Is that correct? Truck backs over it or something?
I'm sorry, you might have to be a little bit, I'm not fully understanding your question.
Commissioner Schoburg, I think, in talking with the Bismarck District Director from DOT yesterday, when the trucks back up with a load of concrete and they're not sinking into the base material, that's part of the testing, too. So, if they're not sinking in, then the base material is ready to accept the concrete, and that's a good thing.
Okay.
So, even though it was raining out on Monday morning, I think, when they were pouring, they were keeping a close eye on the base material and making sure it was stable and acceptable for concrete.
Thanks for the correction. Appreciate it.
All right, moving on. These other projects have a little bit less activity. The Water Treatment Plant Phase 3 Optimization Project has been focused on the lime silo area. The only recent work that's really happened is they've backfilled the lime silo area and cut sheet piles. Other than that, there hasn't been too much activity on that site. There will be some fall work yet to be done, lime silo work, railroad spur work and roofing. And then we'll move into indoor work. There will likely be a little lull here while AE2S approves shop drawings and they order, they order the parts and materials that they need to do some of the other work on the job. Any questions on Water Treatment Plant Phase 3? Collins Avenue Reservoir, recent work included finishing the wire winding and the Shot Creek, Shot Crete. And then they worked on the south tie-in and vault work, which you can see in the picture right here. Once again, this is the same winter shutdown update, new reservoir online in late November, and then the exterior finishes will finish in the spring. Any questions on Collins Avenue? The last one I have is the 2025 Street Reconstruction. All water main is installed and online. The PRV installation will happen next week. And if you notice, there are some streetlights out in the area. The electrical work to restore those streetlights will occur after the PRV installation is completed, and then everybody should be back up and running as far as streetlights go. If there's any other streetlights that remain out, just let us know and we'll coordinate getting those back up. Sidewalk and curb and gutter, concrete repairs will be ongoing and then paving operations will continue, all of this is as weather allows. The contractor will finish the base lift of asphalt this fall and final lifts will likely be completed in the spring. But once again, this is weather, weather needs to be considered. And then chip seal and unfinished items will be wrapped up in the spring as well. Questions on that one?
Jerk, can I back up, please? Mayor, Jerk, about the water tower. I've been asked this, too, and I don't know. When it's all completed and you're talking about putting it into use, does it have to have a bunch of water put in it to flush it out, or is it, is the interior ready to go when the water comes in and it's ready to start servicing the lines?
It's a great question. Mayor, Commissioner Roar, I would imagine that there'd have to be some flushing that needs to occur prior to getting put online, but I'd have to confirm that with-
Well, I was asked. No, I didn't know, so I thought-
Yeah, I'll get that answer for you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And that is what I have.
Okay. Thank you very much. Item number three under announcements, tomorrow night at 5:15, there will be a ribbon cutting for the Mandan Art Alley, and that is located one block over here on Second Avenue in the alley. Will probably staged by, between Vicki's and Big Stick. And there is some speakers and then some refreshments after. So, please plan on attending the ribbon cutting at 5:15 for the Art Alley. Mandan Progress Organization Mix and Mingle at Dakota Customs Thursday night, October 23rd, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. Please RSVP to the Mandan Progress Organization or register at visitmandan.com site. Item number five, Trunk or Treat. Chief Ziegler, would you like to talk about that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. Yes, on October 31st, from 4:00 to 6:30 at the Law Enforcement Center located at 205 First Avenue Northwest, we'll have our 7th Annual Trunk or Treat. I want to thank the Mandan Eagles again for the $1,500 donation for all the candy that's going to be given to us. This will be cooperative with Morton County Sheriff's Office and a lot of the city departments will be setting up. There's some local businesses that will set up for the trunk or treat. And it's a safe environment for kids and families to come down and get their treats. And hopefully, there's not a lot of tricks unless the city administrator's down there running his motorized golf cart around. So, yeah, come down to the Police Department on October 31st from 4:00 to 6:30 and have a good time and get a lot of good treats.
Okay. Thank you very much. At this time is public comment section. Mr. Newbauer, do we have any? We have no public comments. So, we will move on to the approval of the agenda. Commissioners, you've reviewed the agenda.
I'll move to approve tonight's agenda.
Second. We have a motion by Commissioner Roar, a second by Commissioner Schoburg, to approve the agenda. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioners Braun.
Yes.
Roar.
Yes.
Schoburg.
Yes.
Heinzchen.
Yes.
Yes. We'll move on to the minutes. Approval of the October 7th, 2025 Board of City Commission Meeting Minutes.
I'll move to approve the October 7th, 2025 Board of City Commission Meeting Minutes.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Schoburg, a second by Commissioner Heinzchen. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Commissioners Roar.
Yes.
Schoburg.
Yes.
Heinzchen.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. We have no public hearings, so we'll move on to bids. Item number one, consider awarding bids for the Street Improvement District 240, Shores at Lakewood, Phase 2. Jerk?
Mayor and Commissioners, this is the Street Improvement Project associated with the development just west of Lakewood Elementary and south of Dutton Circle. Bids were advertised and then opened on October 3rd. We received two bids, one from Northern Improvement and one from Knife River. The two bids on the $2 million project were about $10,000 apart from each other, so very, very tight bid bidding process. These were both under the engineer's estimate. It is our recommendation to award the bid, the base bid and alternate one, to Knife River as presented in the packet. And then I would also like to note that it did make an update to the suggested motion, which included the approval of a resolution awarding the bid as well. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, those are our recommendations.
Jerk, that, the final bid was substantially lower than the engineer's estimate, correct? About 700 grand?
Mayor, Commissioner Schoburg, yes. The bids, the low bid was just over $2 million and our engineer's estimate was 2.7 million.
Thank you. Any other questions for Jerk?
I move to award the base bid and alternate bid to Knife River Corporation for Street Improvement District 240 and approve the resolution that is awarding the bid.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Roar, a second by Commissioner Schoburg. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioners Schoburg.
Yes.
Heinzchen.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Roar.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items that you would like removed from the consent agenda?
Mayor, I'd like to pull item number two on the consent agenda.
Okay. Any other items, Commissioners? If not, I would look for a motion to approve items one and then three through eight.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Heinzchen, a second by Commissioner Roar. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Commissioners Heinzchen.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Roar.
Yes.
Schoburg.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. Item number two. Jerk?
Yes, Mayor and Commissioners. Just gonna give a little bit of background on this item. For Sewer Improvement District 144 project that was started in 2007, we had an estimated sewer shed area that is shown in red on this map. And this estimated sewer shed area extended out beyond the city limits at the time. And this is the, this is kind of known as the Red Trail properties that we're talking about today. Since it was out of city limits, it was held in abeyance all these years. These properties recently came into the city and these properties where we were estimating them to be served for them from the sewer improvements to the east, they are instead being served by sewer improvements that we recently made to the west. So, those properties no longer benefit from this 2007 project. And it's our recommendation, since this project has been paid in full since then, is to remove the assessments held in abeyance on these properties that don't benefit from that previous project. If there's any other specific questions, I can try and answer them. Otherwise, that's our recommendation.
Jerk, I had to go to the dictionary and look up the meaning of the word "abeyance." Basically, just means a state of inactivity or suspension. There's really no money involved in this abeyance, so nothing's going to be repaid to anybody because there's nothing put into it. Is that correct?
Mayor, Commissioner Schoburg, that is correct. The project was paid for by the properties that benefited from the project, and there's no outstanding debt to be paid.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions? If not, what are your wishes?
I'll move to remove the hookup fees that are held in abeyance for the Red Trail holding properties related to Sewer Improvement District Number 144. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Schoburg, a second by Commissioner Heinzchen. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Commissioners Braun.
Yes.
Roar.
Yes.
Schoburg.
Yes.
Heinzchen.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. There's no old business, so we'll move on to new business. Item number one, consider requests from Mandan Progress Organization related to the July 3rd, 2026, United States 250th Celebration Fireworks Show. Matt?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you for having me here this evening to talk about the 250th celebration next July 2nd, 3rd, and 4th in Mandan. It is gonna be a great celebration, and one of the things that we are working with is to do a pyromusical celebration on the evening of July 3rd. For those that don't know, a pyromusical is a fireworks show that is set to a soundtrack, music soundtrack of either good old traditional US songs as well as some contemporary songs as well. We're excited to have a partner with Pegasus Illuminations to be putting on this show for us on July 3rd here in Mandan. So, this should be a pretty good celebration. It should be one of the largest fireworks shows in the state for this 250th celebration. So, we're excited for that. I'm here this evening just to answer any questions about that, also to request a $50,000 commitment from the city to help get this particular project and celebration underway as we start planning already for the 250th celebrations next July 3rd and 4th of 2026.
Do you have a video or anything to show?
Yes. So, we have a little bit of a segment that was done here at that Pegasus Illuminations did for Dickinson last year over the 4th of July. This was a pyromusical as well. And you can see some of the types of fireworks that will be going off at the show that we are currently planning and designing for the 4th of July, or July 3rd here in Mandan.
And this is smaller than what you're proposing?
Yeah, yeah. This is a smaller show. It is, this show was done in gradients of some buildings, so they had to lessen the size of the shells that were being used. Our goal with the landowner that we're working with is to be able to do some much larger shells as part of our show here on July 3rd, 2026.
Matt, Pegasus is a North Dakota company.
They are. They are actually a North Dakota company and they are headquartered in Mott, North Dakota.
And there's already been meetings with fire and police and-
Yes. We have actually started those meetings about a month, month ago, or more with those conversations as to the location. We're still finalizing that, so we haven't released what that location is yet. But we have been working with them on traffic and other safety requirements that are going to be needed to use this location as the fireworks, fireworks location for the, for this event.
Thank you.
Matt, this, the $50,000 you're asking for, is that for the city to cover this entire show?
No. This show is a, about a $75,000 show. So, the MPO is going to be raising sponsorship dollars and committing that additional $25,000 plus whatever additional costs that we're going to need for the logistics of this particular show. Our estimate that this, this event, this July 3rd event's going to cost anywhere from $100,000 to $250,000 when we get done with logistical things, porta-potties, trash, bus shuttle services to get people in and out of there, marketing, floodlights that we're going to need for safety, security, all those different things are going to come into play for this event.
Any other questions?
Matt, how many, how many people, I know it's hard to guess, but if you, what would the, what the plan for how many people would you look at?
Our estimate that onsite, we could see anywhere from 7,000 to 8,000 people that come to the actual site. In the area, we could see anywhere from 10,000 to 12,000 being able to observe this particular show. And that would be in the immediate, I'd say, half mile to a mile radius when you look at the different properties that are around there. And beyond that, you're, most of anyone that's in Mandan that has a high enough vantage point, even if you go south to Fort Lincoln Elementary and those hills, kind of in those neighborhoods there, they should be able to see some of the larger shells of this show. So, in combination, you could probably see anywhere from 12,000, 15,000 to 17,000 people being able to see this show from some perspective.
I'm assuming the people in Bismarck should be able to see it.
Yes. From the vantage points of Chief's Looking Village up there and the Promontory Point area, will probably have a very good vantage point of seeing this particular show.
Any other questions for Matt?
Another question. You haven't said where this is going to be held at.
We haven't. We're still securing that, so we don't want to release unless we have to make some changes. But we're trying to get all that finalized here in the next two to three weeks.
And we're requesting the funds from, Mr. Newbauer?
Mayor Freilich and Commissioners, it is from the city's 2% occupancy tax and promotion fund. So, majority of these funds are used to help support the Bismarck Mandan Convention and Visors Bureau. And there are some remaining funds that are used for doing some city promotions.
And this would fall under city promotions?
Yes.
Thank you. Take a motion and then we can have comments, or you can, you can go right now if you would like a comment?
Okay. Well, you know, my opinion is based on the fact that I'm somewhat fiscally conservative, and I think, you know, $50,000 is quite a bit of money from the city of Mann to be spent on something. I'm not sure what kind of financial return it's going to be to the city in terms of business or things like that. There'd be a lot of people, you know, seeing that. And the rodeo has its fireworks, along with a panorama of fireworks throughout, you know, the two cities on both nights that light up the skies on both, both dates. It's my view that the MPO could probably use the $50,000 for enhancing events such as the summer concerts and the Christmas display downtown. And excuse my play with words, bigger bang for the buck, to provide, you know, an outcome that would have a little more, a longer lasting effect and be more impacting. So, that's just my, my view.
Thank you. I'll remind again that this is for the 250th celebration. This is, you know, derelictly, once every 50 years. So, it will be memorable. And I think you're conservative on 7,000. I think we're going to get 10 to 12. There could be some logistics out at the rodeo this year with the, or next year with the construction on the Memorial Highway. So... So I'm looking forward to it.
We are too.
I would entertain a motion for or against?
I'll move to approve the $50,000 funding assistance to Mandan Progress Organization from City of Mandan's 2% occupancy tax promotion fund for the US 250th Celebration Fireworks Show. Second?
We have a motion by Commissioner Schoburg, a second by Commissioner Heinchan. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioners Roar.
No.
Schoburg.
Yes.
Heinchan.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. We'll move on to item number two, consider proposal from Starion Bank for the city's sales of definitive improvement warrants and refunding improvement bonds. Greg?
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Um, on September 16th of this year, the city commission approved of the special assessments for, uh, the following improvement districts, uh, Street Improvement District 231, which was the 8th Avenue Northwest Project, Street Improvement District 235, which was the 2024 Street Rehabilitation Project, Water and Sewer Improvement District 64, Northwest Trunk Sewer Project, uh, Trails Improvement District Number One, North Dakota Highway 6, Shared Use Trail Project, and also Trails Improvement District Number Two, which was the Old Red Trail Phase One Project. On September 18th, the city issued a request for proposal to four financial institutions located in Mandan, uh, for the banks to provide, uh, the long-term financing for the city's improvement districts consisting of a 10-year term and a 15-year term. Uh, the city received four proposals by the October 2 deadline. Uh, based on the proposals received, uh, Starion Bank submitted the lowest interest rate for, of 5% for the 10-year term and 5.15% for the 15-year term. Uh, the proceeds from the sale of the warrants and bonds will be used to reimburse the city for the cost of the improvements. Um, the city will, um, repay the warrants and bonds through the collection of the special assessments from these improvement districts. Uh, the interest rate for the special assessments will be the same as the interest rate for the warrants and bonds, since the warrants and bonds are subject to optional redemption or prepayment as provided, uh, in the resolutions. Uh, the resolutions were prepared by the city's bond council, and they are recommended for your approval, and there are, uh, two separate motions that will require two separate roll call votes, and I will stand for any questions you may have.
Any questions for Greg?
Mayor and Greg, quick question on the, I believe it was a couple months ago that we voted to allow this to even happen locally, right? To, to be able to do this locally, or was that something different on a different bond market?
I believe last year was the first year that we implemented, um, soliciting the, the, either a year or two ago, uh, where the city, um, chose to go the route of, uh, allowing the local financial institutions to provide financing for the, uh, city's infrastructure projects. Uh, the advantage in working with the local banks is that the city can set its terms, meaning that if property owners prepay their assessments, uh, the city can bundle those prepayments and then submit those, um, special assessment collections to the financial institution providing the financing, which then in turn, the city can reamortize the loan and lower its future interest costs. Because when people prepay their special assessments, either in part or in full, the city no longer is able to collect the future interest on those assessments, um, which is different than market bonds. When you go to the market to sell bonds, um, the provision for prepayment isn't there until about seven years into that bond issue, which is the call date. Um, and we can't get around that. But when we look locally to our financing through loans, they're not called market bonds, we have the opportunity to set the terms which, um, provides, um, the opportunity for the city to lower that future interest cost through prepayments of specials. So it's been about two or three years that we've implemented this practice.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Greg, what's, what's the percentage typically of people that pay off their specials ahead of time?
I knew someone was going to ask that. Um, President Freilich, um, Commissioner Braun, it, it varies. Um, it really depends upon the project. It's not a consistent percentage from project to project. For example, um, just recently with two projects that Brevera Bank provided financing for, we've already collected, um, about 350,000 plus maybe of prepaid special assessments. And so the city intends to turn around and then, um, pay Brevera Bank those special assessment collections so we can then reamortize the loan and lower the interest rate going forward. But to answer your question on the percentage, um, I have not, you know, for example, with, with Brevera Bank, um, I don't know exactly what that percentage is, but I do know that prepayments occur, uh, they can be large and they can be small. It just depends upon the project, and it depends upon the property owners within each district.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for Greg? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the resolution creating the funds of improvement districts and authorizing the issuance of improvement warrants.
Second?
We have a motion by Commissioner Heinchan, a second by Commissioner Brown. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioners Schoburg.
Yes.
Heinchan.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Roar.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. Also would entertain a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the issuance.
I'll move to approve the resolution authorizing the issuance of 8,000, 8,717,000, $190 refunding improvement bonds series 2025.
Second?
Motion by Commissioner Heinchan, a second by Commissioner Brown. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioners Heinchan.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Roar.
Yes.
Schoburg.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. Item number three under New Business Long-Term Financial Planning Policy. Greg? Or? Justin?
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. On October 7th, the commission approved the city's five-year long-term plan. During our working, last working session in May, the commission asked that, following that adoption, that the finance department bring back the planning policy for revision from five years to 10 years. There is a suggested motion, motion in the package, and I would stand for questions.
Any questions for Justin? Justin, the purpose of this, remind everybody?
Yeah, the purpose is when we, we'll start our update to that, to the finance plan this fall, um, and it's just for, to guide staff on, are we planning for the five years that the current policy is, or looking out 10 years into the future, which is the proposed update to the long-term financial planning policy.
And the reason we want to go to 10?
A lot of our projects continue to be farther into the future in higher dollar amounts, and we want to be sure that we're doing our due diligence as staff and finance professionals to make sure we're making the best decisions possible for the community.
Good answer. Thank you. Any questions for Justin? If not, to put entertain a motion?
I move to approve the update to the long-term financial planning policy.
I'll second.
Motion by Commissioner Roar, a second by Commissioner Schoburg. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioners Braun.
Yes.
Roar.
Yes.
Schoburg.
Yes.
Heinchan.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. Item number four under New Business, consider submitting a Highway Safety Improvement Program Grant Application to the Metropolitan Planning Organization. Jerick?
Mayor Commissioners, um, the NDDOT and the Metropolitan Planning Organization recently solicited, solicited applications for a number of grant programs. One of those grant programs was the Highway Safety Improvement Program, which, um, as you might guess, are for road projects that have a safety focus. Um, in this particular program, projects like roundabouts and rapid rectangular flashing beacon projects are very competitive. Um, this, this program, uh, or this grant cycle was soliciting for the 2030 fiscal year, and, um, we looked at our handy-dandy five-year capital improvement plan and identified a 2030 project that was the, uh, Sunset Drive and 27th Street Roundabout, with this would be just southwest of the middle school. Um, we've had a lot of, uh, we have aging pavement there, and then we've had, we have a lot of, uh, complications at that intersection related to the major movements being northbound right turns and westbound left turns. Um, Roundabout would reduce the conflicts between those two movements, and, uh, we'd have a, we'd have a good product. Um, this grant program includes 90% federal funding, and, and the $2.7 million project, we would be, we would have a local match of about $270,000. Um, and we are proposing to pay those through special assessments in a future district. Um, we're recommending approval of, or authorization to submit the, uh, grant application, but I can try and answer any questions if you have any.
Mayor Jerick, wasn't this, this is the same project that maybe a year or so ago, then they have a, or the public could go up and they had different designs, and they were asking for public input. Did they pick out a particular design from that?
So, uh, Mayor Commissioner Roar, this would be just north of that. Uh, the Sunset Drive Interchange Project included the intersection at, um, Sunset and Old Red Trail, and then this project would be, would basically continue improvements, uh, north to the next, uh, functionally classified road, which would be 27th.
So it's a separate project?
Separate project.
Okay.
But done, um, kind of in conjunction and coordination with that Sunset Drive Interchange Project.
Okay, thanks for the clarification.
Absolutely.
Any other questions for Jerick? If not, could I get a motion?
I'll move to authorize the engineering department to submit a Highway Safety Improvement Program Application for the Sunset Drive and 27th Street Roundabout. Second?
A motion by Commissioner Schoburg, a second by Commissioner Heinchan. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioners Roar.
Yes.
Schoburg.
Yes.
Heinchan.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. We'll move on to item number five, consider submitting an urban grant program application to the Metropolitan Planning Organization. Jerick?
Mayor Commissioners, um, one of the other programs that they solicited applications for was the urban grant program. Um, we have an urban grant program project slated to start next year, which is phase one of our downtown street improvement projects, um, shown in orange on the map that I have pulled up. Uh, this application would be for fiscal year 2029 and would be for the, uh, continued improvements to the east of phase one, phase two, shown in purple here. Um, we are, uh, structuring our application similar to how we, uh, structured phase one, which would be about a 60% ask on the overall project, um, cost, and so that'd be about 3.75 million of the two, 6.2 million dollar project. Um, the remaining amount would be paid for, or would be, we'd propose to be paying for that through a combination of municipal infrastructure funds, utility funds, sales, or, um, sales tax funds and Department of Water Resource Funds and special assessments, similar to how phase one is being funded. Um, it's a kind of a, a large or a complicated funding package, but, um, that's how we have, we have it kind of broken out in the application, if you wanted to take a closer look. Um, our recommendation is to authorize the engineering department to submit this application, otherwise I can try and answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for Jerick? If not?
Mayor and Jerick, I guess I would just say that for the public's knowledge, right? This is, the steps in this is to submit, uh, the grant application, and from then, or from there, there'll be follow-up meetings and things with stakeholders in the area and things. This is to submit the application.
Mayor Commissioner Heinchan, that is correct. This would be, yeah, this would be our first step towards continuing this project on, and hopefully the conversations that we'd be having after this would include knowledge about whether or not this grant is included in the funding package. Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Jerick? If not?
I move to authorize the engineering department to submit an urban grant program application for phase two of the downtown street improvement project.
Second?
We have a motion by Commissioner Brown, a second by Commissioner Roar. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call?
Commissioners Schoburg.
Yes.
Heinchan.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Roar.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. We will now move on to resolutions and ordinances. Item number one, consider the introduction and first consideration of ordinance number 1478 to amend and reenact section 117 dash 3 dash 7. Two of the Mandan Code of Ordinances relating to the coverage ratio for water and sewer revenue bonds. Greg?
Mayor Commissioners, um, I'll provide you some brief background, and then I'll wrap it up and put this item in layman's terms that hopefully everyone can understand. Um, the Mandan Code of Ordinances currently requires that net revenues from the city's Water and Sewer Utility Fund equal at least 125% of the annual principal interest due on outstanding water and sewer revenue bonds. This provision establishes a debt service coverage ratio intended to ensure adequate revenues are available to meet bond obligations and maintain fiscal stability in the city's utility operations. Uh, when originally enacted, and I did some looking today, I believe this goes back to the 1950s, um, where the 125% coverage ratio, uh, reflected prevailing lending requirements at that time. However, current municipal finance practices and recent bond issuances in North Dakota generally require a coverage ratio of 110%, unless a higher percentage is specifically required by the lender or bond purchaser. For instance, according to the North Dakota Public Finance Authority State Revolving Fund, bond resolutions for loans backed by revenue bonds, uh, covenant that the borrower were charged fees that will generate net revenues, um, that are at least, um, 1.10 times the average annual debt service for all outstanding revenue bonds. Adjusting the city's ordinance to 110% aligns the code with modern lending standards, avoids imposing a higher than necessary coverage requirement on rate payers, and provides flexibility to meet lender expectations in future financing. In layman's terms, for every $1 of principal and interest on the revenue bonds in the, uh, Water and Sewer Utility Fund, the city has to set rates that would equate to at least a minimum of 125% um, of the bond. So for every dollar of principal and interest, we would need a dollar 25 of net revenues from our water and sewer utility rates. So therefore, when you lower the bond debt service coverage ratio, it lowers the long-term impact of your utility rates, which ultimately helps our customers. And looking at our CIP for the next five, 10 years, there will be major projects and there will be, um, additional debt that the city will be taking on. Lowering the debt service coverage ratio from 125% to 110, um, just helps in keeping those projected rate increases long-term to be as low as we possibly can set them. So this really is a housekeeping thing, um, that will benefit the city, um, long-term.
Very good. Questions for Greg?
From, from this chair, thank you for making it easy for me to understand. It's like he's speaking French or something to me, but good. It's like he's speaking French or something to me, but good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the introduction and first consideration of Ordinance Number 1478 to amend and reenact Section 117-3-7, two of the Mandan Code of Ordinances relating to the coverage ratio for water and sewer revenue bonds.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Heinchan, a second by Commissioner Brown. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioners Heinchan.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Roar.
Yes.
Schoberg.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. Item number two, Consider the Introduction and First Consideration of Ordinance Number 1479 relating to restricted parking of certain vehicles and trailers.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, this clarification's been requested by the police department to clarify that under the MCO, it is unlawful to park or leave standing on any street in the city, a vehicle or trailer which is unlicensed or for which current number plates and tabs are not displayed. If you look at the exhibit attached to this item, it shows the language being struck from the ordinance and the language to be added to the ordinance. In its current iteration, the ordinance refers only to expired registrations without specifically stating that current plates or current registration tabs must be displayed, as is a requirement elsewhere in the code. As I understand it, this is meant to address the scenario in which a law enforcement officer sees expired registration on a parked vehicle, issues a citation or ticket. The owner of the vehicle, under the current iteration, the old iteration of the ordinance can say, yes, the registration tabs aren't up to date, but the registration has not expired, I just haven't put them on, which could lead to an argument that the citation could be dismissed, or actually result in dismissal in traffic court. So it clarifies the intention that the registration tabs, updated registration tabs and plate numbers need to be displayed in order to park on any street within City of Mandan.
Okay.
So with that, we'd recommend, you know, approving the introduction and first consideration of Ordinance Number 1479 as presented.
Thank you. Entertain a motion?
I'll move to approve the introduction and first consideration of Ordinance Number 1479 as presented.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Schoberg, a second by Commissioner Roar. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Commissioners Braun.
Yes.
Roar.
Yes.
Schoberg.
Yep.
Heinchan.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes, thank you. Item number three, Consider Resolution Establishing Rates and Charges for Services from the Solid Waste Utility Fund. Shane?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner, Mayor and Commissioners. This resolution updates the rates and charges for our solid waste utility fund. For garbage collection and disposal, the monthly base charge for residential account will increase by just five cents per family living unit. Reflecting our ongoing contract with eco-sanitation, the recycling collection will remain unchanged for 2026 under our contract with waste management. Additionally, landfill rates are being adjusted to align with current operational costs and remain comparable with neighbor, neighboring regional facilities. These updates help us ensure our solid waste services remain sustainable, fair, and efficient for our community. I recommend approval of this resolution.
Any questions for Shane?
So Shane, the, our contract with eco-sanitation for basically household non-recyclables will go up five cents, but waste management will stay the same until, what, roughly December twenty eighth, 2028?
Mayor, Commissioner Schoberg, yes, the new, our extended three-year contract with waste management, the updated rates for 2026 were unchanged. They will go potentially up in 27 and 28, but that's our next three years.
Okay. And there'll be a few amendments for the disposal of items at the city landfill.
Commissioner Schoberg, that's correct.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the resolution establishing rates and charges for services from the, sorry, from the solid waste utility fund.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Heinchan, a second by Commissioner Brown. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. Newbauer?
Commissioners Roar.
Yes.
Schoberg.
Yes.
Heinchan.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. Move on to, there is no other business tonight. The future meeting dates for the Board of City Commissioners are November fourth, 2025 at 5:30 p.m., November eighteenth, 2025 at 5:30 p.m., and December second, 2025 at 5:30 p.m. And with that, if there's no other business, it's be kind to your neighbor, have a good safe Halloween, and it's onward and upward, Mandan. Meeting adjourned.